Yeah, they're honestly searching for more website links. I could try to only keep the current stuff out there. If that's a concern for everybody, we can try to look twice and put it in them.
Yeah, I just, I know every, I've read every ordinance in here at least twice. And I don't know any ordinance anywhere I don't know of, until I never had in the Des Moines. Anyway, alright, so, here's what I'm gonna take away from this. Most of Dan's...
Oh, yeah, hold on a second here.
So, what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna go back and put in all Dan's changes, these changes. So, I'll put in Dan's changes, and then I will take a stab at writing what I think I'm hearing as far as controls. And I'll be looking at that and go from there next month and keep making progress, keep whittling down at this Redwood and try and whittle it down. Yeah, Fred?
Just one thing, what I haven't learned is what happens to the interest when you go reinvest it or take this cash, put it back in the treasury.
Yeah, in reinvest.
That's what my policy.
Yeah, yeah, it just keeps rolling, yeah.
Actually, one other comment there too, because we're talking about the audits coming, so it looks like a lot of this goes back to 2012, 2013. We can dig up a couple more to get to somewhere. I think that was just the time that really when the website took off, I'm sorry.
Mark, is this the investment policy that's also going to the Texas pool? When they do a certification, they have to read this, understand it, accept it, and then certify it? Is anything that we're writing here or adding to this that's not baller play, is that gonna cause, you think it's gonna cause a problem with the certification?
The only problem it can cause is that if, let's say that we said in there that in order to invest funds, it has to have the approval of A, B, C, D. Then, when we go to invest the funds, they're gonna require Linda or somebody to then go back and add additional information. Besides our investment policy, she's gonna have to provide supplemental information, which would then say, look, here's the additional stuff.
But that's not in there, so that's not an issue. That's not in there, right?
What?
Then there's a second person that you have to give certain signature.
No, we're gonna, we're gonna talk about, so the new control section we want to add, that could in fact, it's gonna make it harder. So, yes, the certification process is gonna become more involved, okay?
He was guessing that, thanks.
Yeah, now, some of the, I believe, I think, that in Texas pool, you don't have to certify. I think, I'm not sure, because it's set up by the state. So, they, by letting you in, because they're the ones that let you in the Texas pool, and they're running it. So, they know it, obviously, it's Texas law, or the state of Texas wouldn't be the guy. So, I think what they told me in training was, a new change to the law was that Texas pool didn't have to turn around and certify back to you, that what you're doing is okay, because you're in the pool.
All they're doing is just certifying how they invested your money is legal in the state of Texas, not in the U.S.
Right, but because Texas is running that pool, it is by definition legal.
Okay.
Because the Texas, like, either the treasurer or the comptroller is the one running it.
Yeah.
So, but let's say I went to Fidelity and wanted to invest in a money market mutual fund at Fidelity, okay? Which is perfectly fine. Fidelity would then have to come back to the city and say, okay, according to your investment policy, it says you need to have these four people sign it, prove it. And Linda would have to then either get a certified, there's ways you can do that, and then we'd go back.
They're just certifying, they're just certifying how they treat your money on their side as legal in the state of Texas. They're not concerned about you certifying to them the rules that you have internally about moving money in and out that we're talking about.
That's right.
I'm good with that, I just...
That's right, I mean, and different cities have much more elaborate, because they allow more investments. You know, repo agreements, reversal repos, CMOs, I mean, there's lots of acronyms I could fire at you, you know, where they can invest in those things. We're not going there. That's why, the other thing real quick, there's a whole section about brokers you can use, and what a broker has to do, and the licensing of brokers. That's where you buy securities. Poof, we're not allowed to buy any securities. Don't even worry about brokers and who's bonded and, all that stuff's out the window. So, that's why this is more streamlined, that's part of why I really hacked out. It's a limited amount of things we can do, that's why there is no brokers. There's none of that kind of bonding and all that crap. Bernie, you have a question?
Mark, who do you think will make the decision in the town where we will invest? Or, I would actually call it more speculating than investing if we're moving money back and forth. Who's making this decision? And what is the information level from all the other council members to be informed of this right to invest in?
I mean, if I come to the council member, look, if the council agrees to invest in a Texas pool, where we want to invest our reserve funds, that's up to them to decide, and it's run by the state of Texas.
Well, if they're online, if they have access to the online inquiries, they know exactly what you do when you're doing it before you do it.
So, so I think that, I think that the, you know, the question of, okay, so if I come up and say, you know, we're going to, you know, I'm requesting the council, I want to move $25,000 to the reserve fund, for the utility reserve fund, at Texas pool prime. I'm gonna ask the council for that. They're the ones that have to vote.
So, how much time do they get to inform themselves, what this fund is all about?
Well, that's, right now, what we're debating is, the second part of this agenda item is joining Texas pool.
Right, this is the second.
Joining them. So, if they don't want to invest in Texas pool, then we don't join. Then we don't join, we don't do it.
That's the answer to your question, how much time have they been able to get, had to look up Texas pool and research it to make an informed decision?
We talked about last month.
Okay, so that's, so they kind of lost this point.
And we're not gonna do it tonight anyway, so we're gonna roll again for another month, so...
I think creating the module that Rita, that she recommended would help us, you know, make an informed decision.
Absolutely.
Do we know, Mark, do we know if there are any fees if you move money the wrong way?
No, there's no fees.
There's no fees?
No. It's, it's run basically, because we, I had the Texas pool people here. Linda, did you sit on that? So Linda sat in on, I actually had the Texas people come here, just sat here in City Hall, and I forget who else was there, Ed, were you there? So, Linda was there, I was there, he came into town and said, answer any questions we have, here's the product we have, you know, if you want, we can bring it back to, ask them back, you know, the council meetings, you can talk to them. I don't know, yeah. You know, but he's obviously well-versed in Texas pool. So, after, the reason why I talked to him first was to find out, since I know a little bit about this stuff, was if there was any bodies buried there, we never wouldn't be on the agenda. Oh, no, we wouldn't be here. So, the first thing I do is vet and make sure, after going through all the investment training and knowing about the pools, was for myself to talk to Texas personally, verify all the information they told us in training, and then move forward. I'll get ahold of them, see if they want to come to the next meeting.
Bernie, just answer. I think he said he's local too, isn't he?
He's actually out of Flowerland, I think, he was nearby.
So Bernie, just to answer your question, this was brought up to us last month with less than three days notice. We successfully, we successfully graduated to this point, hoping we can get some people in the audience to slow things down. I'm not saying don't go to Texas pool, I researched a little bit, but the watch outs from our local towns have said, watch the hidden fees, they're gonna eat you up. So, that's my watch out, is we haven't seen, we always talk about is, hey, what's the return on the investment? And we haven't talked about the tax side, and none of that's been presented. So, the reason there's no financials here is because we haven't seen any, and that's exactly what the concern is.
Financials for what?
If you're gonna have an investment policy, you would have those financials, just like if you buy a mutual fund.
We're not even, we're not even to the point of talking about that, we're still talking about the policy, they would be able to do it.
Talked about it last month, and it's gonna come up here in a very nice hour.
We're off the agenda.
Okay, so here we, alright, so basically, the way that, when I'm gonna, I'm sorry, yeah.
Are you, so are you tabling the, both of those items, four and five then, till next month?
I think we got to five already.
Yeah, so four, four, so, yes, let me summarize this and we'll move on, yeah.
Okay.
So, four, basically, I'm, the way I'm taking away with this, I'm gonna put in 95% of Dan's stuff here, and then I'm gonna take a stab at writing controls based on what I think we've hashed out. I'll take a stab at writing that, so we come in next time, we'll make progress, okay? That's kinda what we do, we'll make progress here. So, that's the idea of that, alright, so we're gonna, we're gonna move ahead, Dan. So, five is actually joining Texas pool, so it sounds like we want to wait on that? Okay, so we'll wait on the...
So, this is a consideration.
I have a question today.
This is a consideration, alright, it's the previous table.
It was scheduled, or you can take no action.
We want that. Okay, so number five is the resolution, so basically, we're not gonna, we're not gonna join Texas pool, so we'll handle that.
I guess, well, we've had discussion on and off about it, I mean, so the concern from, it's not just like joining Texas pool, it's just like general concern of an investment other than a financial institution, you know, bank, I guess. Is that what I'm kind of judging or hearing from?
Yeah, it sounds like, I mean, like, it's, yeah, it's kind of a natural growing thing, we've never had investment policy really before. You know, I mean, trying to invest.
Right, to make sure I understand, the takeaway is, the concern is that it says Texas pool, the concern is just the fact of going to...
A non-bank.
A non-bank.
No, the concern is, we're leaving Point Bank for a reason, because I'm not a signature on the account, they would not tell me. However, those reasons and disclosures is what needs to be discussed. There are certain people from this council that know what I'm talking about, but I'm not a signature on it. The question is, why are you leaving Point Bank?
Do you know the answer to that?
I normally use that answer.
Okay, so you keep seeming like you're alluding to something, I honestly think the answers are enough. If you know, then tell us.
They, they need to go to the bank and have, and have them tell us, because without the people who sign it, did you notice that, Neil, let's get the can signed? What you need is, you need a signatory person to get the information, or we can't get it. But there's a reason.
Can you do something, Dan? Can you do something?
No, it's all locked down, he's the chief investment officer, that's what I'm trying to say. That's why I'm alerting you that when you say, we're gonna close our bank accounts, something should go in the back of your head and say, why are we closing them?
Do you have something in writing from the bank?
I, I have it from the bank saying that they absolutely want to have our investments as opposed to what we were...
They want to close our accounts, is that what you're saying?
No, no.
They want to have our investments.
We worked on last month, that the banks do not want to deal with Tom, that's what we were told. So, I went to the bank and said, is it true that you don't want to deal with Tom money? And they said, it's not.
I know, we heard this earlier.
Yeah, so, so then, that's the next question with the investment stuff, and said, well, we can't invest with you, but here they are offering to invest. And then my next question came up and said, well, why are we leaving Point Bank? And all of a sudden, zero information, so I was asking, question?
I don't, Dan, I don't want to repeat it for the 500th time, okay?
Maybe, maybe, I don't even give a listen about that.
1.3%, 4.29. So, you know, that's why. Now, let's move on, we're talking about, now, the investment policy. When we get to this next month, you can vote no, or you can say you believe 0% should go, I don't care, you can handle that next month. So, let's move on to the next item, the next item is number six, consideration of authorizing expenditures for road repairs. So, this is, for, we have a, we have a road maintenance fund where we put money in, and Gary's the one that is spearheading this, he did it last year, Gary's doing this year, so Gary, people.
Well, again, since we, it's gonna be a while before we can put concrete roads in, we're gonna continue patching the roads. We made a deal last year with Walt's paving, and actually Walt's paving didn't do the job, Walt's got married, his dad's company did the job, but... So, we had some of the patches fail, but they were sure of us that that's gonna be repaired. We put an emphasis last year on Melody and then do as much of Cary as we possibly could. This year, we're gonna put an emphasis on finishing Cary up, we got some dips that we need to take care of, and then we're gonna tackle Hyridge, which is about far the worst road I think we've got in town now. What we're gonna do tonight is have the mayor given a certain figure that he can give us to make those repairs. And we didn't know how much we'd be able to spend, I'm hoping we can spend somewhere around $30,000. But if we won't start out with a lower amount and have a little in reserve, we can go from there.
So, so this story, just so, again, what we did last year, we had, I believe it was Gary and Ed, and they, I think you did part of it? But basically, what they do is, is Gary did a lot of legwork, talked to different companies, got different bids, and the companies go out and they, they paint it, they go out and paint it, this is what we're gonna repair. So, we can look at it, before we do anything, we want them to paint it, tell us what we're gonna get for the money. So, that's what they do, they go around, they paint everything, and we kind of look and see this, that, and the other thing, Gary does that. And then they come back, and last year, excuse me, the budget was 25. So, in this road fund, we get roll-off, the blue roll-off containers, we get some sales tax, we have a separate bucket that money goes in. And we get about $25,000 a year goes into the bucket. So, last year, we had 31 in there, we spent 25. We did the road repairs you see on Melody, and a few of them on Cary. So, Gary's the one in charge of that, so this year, right now, as we sit here in the fund, it's got just under 30,000, 29, maybe a little bit more by the end of the month. Basically, about 30,000 in there.
Now, they're ready, since I felt like we wouldn't be able to write any checks until after October, I told them we'd like to do these repairs till the latter part of October.
Yeah, the significance is the getting into the next fiscal.
Well, I mean, one of the, one of the things that we have, and as you all can figure out, trying to get somebody to come out here and do jobs like ours, that ain't big. You know, call on somebody, ask them, you know, can you do a road repair? No prob, how many miles you got? Miles, feet, you know? So, we can't do paving in the middle of summer, that's when everybody's paving real stuff. We can't get on, we can't get in anybody's schedule, they're not gonna pick up their stuff, move it to Lake Village, to do, you know, 500 square feet of potholes, and then remobilize back to where they, they're not doing it. We have to wait till the end of the paving season. Denton County finishes typically at the end of September, early October, that's why if you do county work, you see it in October, November. Because they do it after all the paving's been done, they come back and help cities out, historically. So, when we deal with pavers, typically be contacting in September, try and see if we can get on their schedule. It's either late September, mid-October, early October, it's right in this zone is when we do it. So, this is, that's when we have to do it, is we do it now. I agree with Gary, I think the emphasis to the council should be Cary, especially the south end where all the dips are. And just so you know, those dips are because of utility cuts, because they didn't have the water in the sewer on each side of the street, they didn't put taps in on some of the houses, so the water's on the other side of the street, how do you get there? They brought in a trencher, they trenched across the street to put the water line in, then they just threw the dirt back in the trench. And that was what you did back in 2000, you know, 2003, 45, they made holes, they made trenches. So, Cary's got a lot of trenches across it, and that's, that's kind of the main issue. We all know Hyridge has got issues. Now, one of the things to think about when we do road repairs is that, if you go to like where the mailboxes are, you look at the road, it's spidering. It's not a pothole there, it's spreading. You can see little cracks in it, that's because the road's spreading. You, it's, the way you fix that is you put crack seal on it, and it would look like spaghetti. So, it, it's hard to fix the road when it starts spreading. It's easier to fix potholes, easier to fix holes and make them level. So, that's a challenge for the road repair guys, is how to handle, you know, that...
It's got terrible lights, is the whole problem.
I mean, ask, if you ever went in Sunrise Bay and drove along shoreline, look at the road, it looks like artwork. There's black everywhere all over the road, that's because they're trying to keep the road sealed, because of all the cracks, so, you know.
How much money is in the road now, definitely considered?
The thing I'd like to do is, I would like to give Gary the go-ahead to negotiate for 25 with a 10% over.
Contingency?
Yeah, so like, if the guy gets done, Gary can say, look, you're here, you're right there, why don't you fix, you know, fill 50 more feet and do that, or this, or...
I like that too.
It'll never be cheaper when they're here, right?
It's not an exact science when they cut out, so, yeah.
So, I gotta ask a question, right? We're not gonna RFP this?
We're not gonna what?
We're not gonna do a request proposal?
Well, we're gonna, that's what Gary did, Gary wanted to talk to companies.
No, no, I'm sorry, a request proposal is a, is a formal request, we can get bids in, I'm just asking a question.
We can't.
I'm sorry, a government can't do an RFP?
Okay, so let's, here's what Dan's getting at, let me tell you the problem with RFP.
You don't know what I'm getting at, I'm just asking a question. I'm not saying we have to do an RFP, I'm asking the question, are we going to do, again, follow a typical government procedure of issuing an RFP? In other words, before you authorize money, you say, hey, guys, here's our thing, we would like to get some bids, and you take a look at the bids, and you take a look at what happened. So, I have nothing against Walt's paving or what you did, and I got, trust me, I want the roads fixed more than anybody else, okay? But the question is, shouldn't we do a, isn't it a requirement, or should it be a requirement to post in the paper, hey, Lake Village is looking to repair the roads?
That's a great question, so let's now get to the practical world we live in. So, I said to you, let's do an RFP, okay, we're gonna, we have to put it on the newspaper, you have to give us a bid, okay? You have to give us a bid on it, and we can accept your bid, okay? You have, you give us a bid, we accept your bid, that's your bid, you gotta do it. Now, on anything else, whenever you do RFPs, when you do contracts, you have to give them specs. You have to have the engineers go out and say, there are 42 potholes, they are this deep, here's the way you have to fill them, this is how it has to be compacted. Because you can't bid on it unless you know exactly what it is you're bidding on. So, that's why the state says it's insanity for you to have to do bids on anything less than $50,000. That's why the state law's there, because you can't pay the engineers to come up with all the exact bid specs, why would you spend $20,000 on the engineers? You can't advertise for an RFP unless you have the actual engineering, what is it that you're bidding on? How much asphalt, how deep does it have to be, how many potholes are there, how round are they, are they round, are they square, how big are they? How deep, how much road base, what kind of asphalt, what does the compaction have to be, how soon do you have to do it? What is their penalty for that? It's insanity, so, that's why you don't do an RFP, because it doesn't make any sense.
It's precisely a stopgap move.
There you go.
It's a stopgap move until we get concrete roads.
Perfect, that, I, I...
And so, rather than blow even more money, we're keeping it under 50,000, that way we don't have to send it out for bids. And we really wouldn't want to, first place.
So, I, obviously, there's just two things, right? If you're...
So, what if we, okay, so we don't do an RFP, but can we request bids, and why are we picking this particular contractor?
Because he was the cheapest in offer to do it a little more complex way than Paul said he actually, the guy that did, he probably wouldn't do it the correct way. We didn't have Walt's paving good, we had Walt's dead, but this year, it's supposed to be road road tearing to a certain depth, it'll have a base put in, and some kind of ceiling put on top of that, asphalt on top of that, and then road. And of course, some of the failures that we had with the patches that we put down last time just happened to be in front of a house that had some heavy, heavy equipment go in, and so possibly some of that was poured up with heavy trucks or tractors or whatever.
Gary had mentioned, the guys agreed to go back to all the parts that aren't good, and redo them for free.
They're gonna warranty the work that they did last year, and then, so what's actually gonna be, they're gonna warranty their work and increase their rate over last year?
Alright, so just to clarify, didn't they warranty the work last year?
That's what I heard, what did he get?
So, shouldn't they warranty the work and fix the problems that we have, and then, we may bring them this? I mean, think about what we got, we got, we got, I think it's nine out of 14 ones that failed, that they repaired. The question is, wouldn't they make good on the ones we already paid for before we spend more money?
Again, Dan, why?
If they all, if they all fell, fell apart at the same time, that'd be real good thinking, but unfortunately, life didn't work that way. We'll just tear it right, and then trucks or something will force it up later on, a month or two down the road.
Yeah, I'm gonna go way out on a limb here.
Oh.
You are not, but I really think, I'd like an offer for consideration, that we put off road repairs in and down Hyridge.
I don't know, Ed, I'm starting, tired of looking at blank news and stuff.
I mean, the reason I'm suggesting, I know it's, it is the way I left field, but...
You're on one of the worst streets.
Yeah, one of the bad streets, but first of all, you're not gonna satisfy people who want good roads. That didn't happen the last time we tried to fix them, so there's no expectation that that's gonna happen again. And if we hold off on spending 25, or whatever the number is that we decide on, there's also the opportunity for that money to earn, but... I gotta tell you, I have bid, our roads are not good, but I guarantee you, they're a lot better than a lot of roads that I'm on in other cities. Other cities.
Did you feel...
Dallas.
There was an improvement when we did the actions.
Yeah, I personally thought there was an improvement, but a lot of people, from what I...
I agree with him, I think you're going pretty damn red hole. If all you're gonna do is what you did last time, keep your money in the bank and make money.
So, is he, is he not gonna come and fix what needs to, what failed unless we give him this? Is there like a, well, I'll come fix it, you give me more business, or is he...
Well, that was a statement, I don't want to see him like you did it anymore.
Again, let me, because, you know, let me, let me point something out, because I know you, we don't have a lot of buyer power. Like, I'm just, we, you know, if we said to this guy, tempted, look, you did a crappy job, we've done this before, people come out, they've done a crappy job. You call them and say, look, you did a crappy job, they say, it's sticking in your ear, you don't even like the village, you're nobody. That happens to us, we're not towns, we have no buyer power. So, it's really hard sometimes to get people to even do the job to begin with, let alone, you know, hold their feet to the fire and try and get the road, it's hard. I mean, you know, it just, we don't have, we're not talking about a million dollar one to repair, we're talking about 25,000. I know it's a lot to us, but to write down that the booming economy and everything, it's hard to get people to actually do it.
So, you think about what they're saying, though, Ed's saying, hold off for a minute, unless this is saying, fix what was done last time, and it should be warranty, right? So, if we repaired the ones that were done under the warranty, it shouldn't cost you anything, and then you revisit this afterwards.
We've had this in the past, so, okay, call the guy and say, you know what, there's, it's spidered out where you did something, come back and fix it. We want you to fix it, I've been there, I've done this.
Okay, well, let's do this, we're, we're stuck, Gary, would you mind calling them and see if they'll just come out and fix the warranty work, nothing else? How good, and then?
I mean, I'll, I'll be the first to admit that the roads are not what we'd like them to be, but they're, they're not, they're traversable. They're not concrete, they're not smooth, but nobody's getting front ends knocked out of the wagon, as far as I know, and...
I'm not a big fan of the dips on my...
No, I would agree, okay, well, just buy a couple bags of asphalt and fill it in, or some dirt, or something, and, you know, just take out the belt and tickle the hell out of me. Two sets of tires this year.
Alright, it's up to the council, I mean, is there, is there an action, is there any here, is there a motion, any action, any motions?
I'm watching that, going forward, I, with the road repair, I think people are forgetting how bad Melody was at one time. And it's a stopgap measure until we get concrete roads. Some of the patches did fail, if the guy will make them good, then we'll end up with good road correction for months, however long.
I'll second Gary's comment.
Okay, so I have, I have a motion to authorize 25,000.
Plus the 10%.
Plus the 10% contingency. I have a motion by Gary, I have a second by Clint, okay, all of us in favor? All those in favor? All those opposed? Don't abstain anybody, or I gotta vote. Okay. Okay, that would be a first, and I don't want to go there. Okay, so I guess we'll be back next month.
So where, where do we land, Gary, so the motion for the new business failed, but.
I will contact the guy at, in, talk to him about the failures, we were told by Pop up that the patch it would last as long as the existing road there.
Okay, I'll see what's up, thank you.
See where that goes. That's a, an involved thing, though, that's a lot of equipment.
No, I, no, I realize it's, I don't envy your conversation about that, all right.
All right, you have one, one, two, one? Next up, we have Dark Skies, and that is a project that Ed has taken on, and he's been running it pretty hard, so.
Linda, do you have the?
Um, council has funds at their place and then that's another one to discuss.
Okay, uh, you don't have to get them now, but maybe before the session's over with, there's some information about Dark Skies that I won't go into that talks about the potential of energy savings as a result of implementing Dark Sky. But before I get in, you know, Mark had mentioned this last week or last month during a council meeting and it wasn't, we didn't have a lot of information. And so the purpose of this presentation is really just to share a little bit more information about just exactly what Dark Sky is. And, but in an attempt to save time and, and at future council meetings, I feel compelled to state this disclaimer. Information, data and opinions and answers to questions from the audience or council members regarding the Dark Skies initiative. I share it and I may be changed, altered, omitted, et cetera in future updates and presentations. Okay? I thought I'd at least give a laugh about it.
I had an awful laugh at people.
I understand. Okay, so what is Dark Skies? There you go, okay. Can you get any large? But Dark, I'll go ahead, we'll, we'll just try and do a little bit more, you can see. Dark Skies is a nonprofit organization stationed, if you will, in Tucson, Arizona, that began in the early 2000s. And I've listed here a couple of websites for the international organizations, well as the Texas chapter, IDA Texas. And their, their goal, if you will, is very similar, but it's simply to protect the nighttime environment.